Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. This is our first meeting of the month, which has happened on the Tuesday meeting and the third Thursday meeting also for county business. So welcome, whether you are here in person, or welcome if you're looking at us, viewing us through Facebook being live stream. So thank you for your participation today. As the Commissioners have noted, we've got a copy of the agenda that looks lengthy, but we're going to try to work on that so that we use all our time and your time wisely. And Mr. Brown has immediately been publicly advertised.
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. Is someone here from the United Minister Alliance to do the invocation? No? All right. Mr. Moser, would you be so kind as to leave sign invocation and our pledge? Please stand for the invocation and our pledge.
I was hoping for the state representative.
Be careful.
He was saying that he wished the state representative would do it.
I'd be glad to. He must not be Baptist.
Let us pray. Almighty, everlasting, thou our eternal God, we thank you once again for the opportunity just to be here as servants of the people. We thank you for this commission. We thank you for the work that they are doing and will do. We thank you for those that have come to participate in the things that it takes to make life good for everybody. Now, Lord, remember us all and remind us, please, that we are deliberating body, but not an unsecure body. Keep our minds, Lord, for it is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for you.
Everybody got it. Everybody got it.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of notes here. As you know, we've got three public hearing matters for us tonight. There are three public hearing sign-in sheets, averance request 2023-022LC, 2323LC, 2324LC, and there is also reconsideration of a matter that was tabled from the April 4th meeting that will not be public hearing. That public hearing was held on April 4th. So if any of those, the ones that are open for public hearing tonight, if anybody wants to sign up, those sheets are in the back. This was a reminder, folks have five minutes to address the chairman and address the board. It can only appear one time.
Thank you, sir. You did it better than I could have. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, let's go with the awards and recognitions, get the happy stuff out of the way first and get into business. Addison James, GECA Area Five Dispatcher of the Year.
Good afternoon.
Oh, dear.
I am here to present an award to Mr. Addison. We are governed, or we have the Georgia Emergency Communication Authority Board. They're umbrellaed under GMA, and they're kind of like our liaison between GMA and the 911 Centers. Each of our areas has a representative, and we're Area Five, so our GECA representative has eight to 10 counties that she's over. Every year, she asks the directors to present employees for dispatcher of the year. And I, every year, I've submitted two to three. This year, we won. Our area won. We submitted Mr. Addison James. I submitted a call. I don't know if he knows even what call I submitted.
Probably the limon.
It was. I submitted a call that he took last July, a very in-depth call. Unfortunately, it didn't end well, but Mr. Addison, after having two years of experience, took that call, stayed on the call with the young lady, kept her calm. He stayed calm. Wasn't a calm moment, but he did extremely well. We couldn't have been more proud of him. So he won, and she came and presented this during dispatcher week, but we wanted to come and celebrate that with you all as well. And that is his award. Congratulations to you. Do you do that? Okay.
Want to say hello to us, sir?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to say, you know, the work I do is, you know, stressful, hard work, but it's good work because I'm the one doing it. So thank you so much for this award.
He keeps us smiling and laughing all the time.
Now, I'm not sure what the trophy wall looks like, but if you like us in the picture, we'd be happy to do a photo op with you.
Take a photo.
Come this way.
I bet we always got you working there. How you doing, Dave?
Got a hit back there, sir.
Stevens, you hitting.
Yeah, I'm here.
He said you hitting.
Oh, yeah. There's a space right here.
Come on, come on.
Oh, goodness.
For the vertical.
I don't want to get contaminated over here.
Be nice children.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Good to know you're there. This time Dean Terry Sellers from Savannah Technical, Liberty County Campus, is going to come introduce another young man with a special honor, Mr. Darrell Sanders. Will you two please come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As he said, I'm Terry Sellers. I'm the campus dean at Savannah Technical College of Liberty Campus, and every year, the technical college system of Georgia has a, it's a competition for the student of the year. Each technical college out of 22 technical colleges has to identify a student that they deem the student of the year. This year, Mr. Darrell Sanders won that award for the college, and he went on to, we first have to go to Tifton, Georgia, for him to be in the regional competition. There are about seven colleges within that region, and those students compete, and when they compete, they choose three finalists out of those seven. They do not reveal at that time who those finalists are. We do not find out who those finalists are until we go to Atlanta for the state competition of all 22 colleges. And this year, when we got to Atlanta, which was last week, Darrell made the finalist. And so it was just a wonderful time. He did not win, but he is our winner, and he shone up and showed out. Everyone knows who Darrell Sanders is at Technical College of, at TCSG now. And so today, I would like to introduce to all of you our winner. He is a Liberty County native, Liberty County citizen, and, but he grew up right here, local, and Darrell Sanders.
Thank you. How you doing, ladies and gentlemen? Like she said, my name's Darrell Sanders. I'm actually from Savannah, Georgia. However, I attended here, believe it or not. I went to Lewis Frazier in Bradwell, my ninth grade year at Bradwell, and of course, Lewis Frazier I attended in eighth grade. I actually also competed there and for floral design for Liberty County, of course, for Bradwell, and unfortunately, I made it to regionals there too, and that's where my journey ended. However, going to Savannah Technical College, of course, I went there with no experience. I did, I never even knew, I'm a barber, for those of you who don't know. I actually never wanted to cut hair. I'm prior service Marine Corps. I went into Marine Corps. I had no idea what I was going to do after coming out. I'm a combat veteran. Marine Corps kind of put me out and said, "Bro, we can't, you can't, we used you enough. We're gonna let you go." So I came out, I did a bunch of different things. I worked UPS. I worked a bunch of different jobs, but I really didn't have a purpose, and what I needed was a purpose. One day, I'm in the barber shop, and of course, my barber cut my hair, my two sons' hair in 30 minutes, and made $65. I was like...
That's right.
I told him, I said, "$65 in 30 minutes, man, I'm in the wrong profession." So he told me, he said, "Go out and you get to, go to school and get your master barber's license, and I'll let you cut in my shop." Immediately, I went up to Savannah Technical Campus calling them, it was like, "Sign me up. I need, I need to do it." He just did. So I came in the class. I actually have a service dog. I didn't know it was going to be this big, otherwise I would have brought him. However, I came in with my service dog. I met my instructor, Mr. Terrance James, amazing, amazing guy, you know, and I told him immediately, I was like, "Brother, I don't like to read." And I was like, "I'm here. I just want to learn how to cut hair." And he said, "Well, there's a lot of reading in here, and I assure you, you can do it." So of course, you know, I actually ended up meeting a bunch of the ladies and gentlemen in that class, and it turned out to be about 80% of those people were veterans. Of course, they all kind of understood where I was coming from because some of them shared the same afflictions. But the problem was, I'm the only Marine in there, and all of, everybody was Army and Navy. So we, if you know the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, we love each other, but we have a love-hate relationship. And so I was like, "That's not one of y'all going to be able to beat me in this class." Everybody had been cutting hair, so they were already beating me. So I had a lot of ground to cover. I just put my best head for it, and I charged for it, and it was, it was my, my thoughts and my drive that actually pushed me to say, "I want to be better than what these guys' best is." So I snuck around and watched a couple of techniques, and I'm a good visual learner, so then I go back and do it, and then in one year, I was able to replicate everything everybody was doing. And then from that point, Mr. James said that I was ready for a barber shop, and that he would introduce me to a few different barbers and see where I wanted to go. And ironically, I ended up in the shop that he took my $65. So, so at that point, I started cutting, and I've been, I've been happy to do that and have become really well. So if you guys ever want to get your hair cut, I cut women hair. I'm also, I can also style. You don't, you don't have to pay that. That style is number. You get that, you get the, you get the style at a barber's price. So of course, I do facials, I do regular haircuts, anything that you want to do in terms of barbering, I can do it. So if you want to come see us, I'll be at Royalty Cuts, and thank you for your time.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Can you do anything with this?
Actually, sir, I'm also able to do what's called a male unit. I actually, and I'm glad you asked that because I should have said that as well. So I actually ended up attend, going to, is it in Jacksonville? I'm not sure, but it's a hair show out there that actually, they teach a lot of different classes. In one of those classes, my brother, he got diagnosed with stage four cancer, so of course, he had a lot of stuff, stage four brain cancer, and so he started losing his hair and everything, and I wanted to give back. I was like, "Brother, I'm gonna make you feel normal." So I went to those hair unit classes, so I can take your head and make it look like mine.
Or mine, or mine, or mine.
When you want that unit, sir, you come on out to Royalty Cut, I got an app and everything for you, and I'll get you, I'll make you, we'll start you off real slow so nobody will notice.
Thank you, Darrell.
Did you sign up?
I'm sorry?
Did you sign up?
Oh, no.
I don't really have an issue with growing hair right now. Mine's growing pretty well.
We recognize Darrell for being a Liberty County resident, having come through our school system somewhat. We also recognize Darrell because he's the go student for the entire Savannah Tech system, but he's representing the Liberty County branch, so we're proud about that.
Absolutely.
And additionally, he would have been at our mid-month meeting, but he could not, tell them why you couldn't make the mid-month meeting?
I had a prior commitment, of course, to Savannah Technical College. I also was inducted into Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. In order to be inducted into that Honor Society, you have to have at least a 3.5 GPA or better, and I wanted to say it's 12 semester course, courses. In order to get there, or be in 12, enrolled into 12 semester courses, my GPS was 3.7, so I'm pretty proud of that. And of course, I wanted to make sure I honored both commitments, and so I actually went into that induction ceremony, and I was the keynote speaker there as well.
All right. Good for you. Now, we'll take a photo. Did you happen to bring your, I didn't tell you to bring your, your go to the Lord.
Service dog. Oh, no, sir, I didn't.
Well, come on, we'll do a picture anyway.
All right, sir.
Put us in this picture, if you will, please, sir.
Yeah, you can work on both.
Mr. Stevens, if you'll need all the help you need.
Somebody recruit him before I got to say.
I can stand on that.
I need you right here, sir, that spot right there.
Put an X, put an X on the spot.
Okay, we got Area Five.
All right.
Okay, we see you. All right, that's a big, beautiful, happy family. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Before we move, before we move, can I get one on my phone?
You can send it to you.
Oh, okay, got it.
Don't, don't, if you're married.
Want me to say one, two, three?
One, two, three.
All right, go on three. One, two, and three.
Another note, let me remind the audience, the, Darrell, your training was at the lab at the Liberty Campus, right? Yes, sir. That lab was paid for with SPOSS dollars. SPOSS, SPOSS come to the recalcitation again. Good to see the fruit thereof. All right, Mr. Matha, can you keep that going?
It's hard to follow, follow those kind of achievements.
You all want to understand something, we'll excuse you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here to present the ARPA grant summary. I believe included in your packets was the full ARPA grant schedule that includes what we've spent to date, and in total, the county received 11.9 million in ARPA grant funds. We have spent 6.3 million through March and have current outstanding POs for another million, bringing us to a total spending to date of 7.3 million. Also included in your packets is this, this short summary based on conversations that you all have had previously. These are some changes we've made to reobligate some of the ARPA funds. The lines at the top are the ones we are proposing be reobligated to fund some of the FY24 CIP projects that are considered urgent, and those include seven HVAC projects throughout the county. Additionally, the remaining funding, we have proposed that it be spent on Miller Park Pavilion and the playground equipment at the gum branch. And that's all I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about ARPA budget amendments? We've had some previous discussion on, on the, on the funds, so this is an action item, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Chairman, Dean, is the water system not included in this?
These are just the ones that were being moved around. The water system is still in the overall budget. Both of those water systems are listed in a separate water line item. These were just the changes y'all discussed.
That's already bid. It's not bid.
One of them is.
Okay. The Louis Frazier one is already bid, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
It wouldn't be in here, then?
Yes, sir, it's still in there.
I'm told, Matt, it's not under the new funded obligation.
No, that's right.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
You, Chair and Chair of Motion. Jeff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the motion that we approve the, uh, ARPA grant.
Second, we approve the ARPA budget amendments presented for discussion. All in favor, show your hands, please. Opposition? All right. Ms. Laurie, we're making an adjustment, if you will, Ms. Laurie. I wanna bring Representative Williams up, do you mind, sweetie? Go, go to work with the papers you got right there. Representative Williams? You come, sir, with your updates, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank this august body for allowing me to come. I obviously picked a good day, I've seen miracles. Commissioner Stevens is growing hair, that's a miracle. Chairman and Commissioner Frazier, you know, my pet peeve is the pledge of allegiance and how it's said, nineteen fifty-five, President Eisenhower inserted the word "under God", and we kept the comma in the wrong place. The pledge is said, not calm, not slowing, until you say "under God," the comma's after "under God." It's a little pet peeve, you're not gonna change. I've been trying this in the legislature for twenty years, and although I have about twenty-five people that now say it right, but always remember, it ain't right until the comma comes up "under God." You brought me here for this valuable information, I just, just shared with you. And I was listening to the young man who certainly was honored to hear, both of them, were great. Attorney Davis and I agreed that if we have an emergency, we certainly want him to be the one answering, for sure. And the, the young barber, I wanted him to know that in Georgia, you can buy food on a mobile truck, you can get your heart tested, you can see a dentist, you can do just about everything you want, but you can't get your hair cut on a mobile barber shop. Never understood how you can buy food, and it's healthy. I've introduced this bill, first time I introduced it was in two thousand nine. The chairman of the committee's head resembled some of your hair, no, no pun intended, Brother Jones and Brother Stevens, but their hair was like yours, so they weren't much interested. But we're going to continue, because I think it's important that we not muzzle free enterprise. It has nothing to do with who has something now, but it has everything to do with, if I've got a better hamburger, it's not my fault if folk no, folk no longer buy your hamburger. That's what democracy's about, I've got an opportunity in a capitalistic society, we have to remember that. This legislative session was, it, I don't know whether it's me after twenty, whether it was just more tiring than the usual, it got louder than the usual, but no more was said than the usual. Couple of things that I think are very, very much interest to the commission. I opposed very strongly House Bill one-eighty-nine that increased the weights on the highways. I thought it was bad legislation. If the state does not send money to make whole those counties that now must repair roads more often than they did in the past, then we've handed out another unfunded mandate, and there is a difference of thousands of pounds, not to mention, you can't convince me that a truck with ninety-three thousand pounds on it can stop as quickly as it did when it had eight-to-ten thousand less pounds on it. That is a safety concern, and while I'm all for the agriculture business, which is, part of which is timbering, I know that there's a safety factor, first. Secondly, the affordability of counties being able to repair the roads that these vehicles will damage, and they will damage them over time. And folk will be concerned, "Well, why do we have all these potholes?" Well, you got heavier loads riding on them. The federal government does not allow timber to be transported on the interstate highway because of that, and their roads are thicker than ours, concrete, I think, six inches or better. So, that if you thought I sounded like a sore loser, I was, I was very sore about that. Couple of other things that are of importance to you. We continue to try and widen the bridge off of ninety-five to eighty-four. As we grow out there, we've got to put another couple of lanes at least. When you dump two lanes i- i- uh, into that, you run into problems, and we need to expand that bridge, because trade police is growing and continues to grow. It's gonna be very beneficial to the county, and, and certainly, it helps the prosperity of this county that we have in the years I've spent on the Development Authority. And Chairman, I know will agree with this, I've never seen the activity that we've seen over the last six or seven months. We have more potential industry on the table right now than we've had in any two, three, two or three years combined at any one time. And we're talking about good jobs, many of them are manufacturing jobs that will change the lives of your citizens. You see, when a person makes enough money to make the American dream come alive, and it's very simple, to live a decent life, build a nice home, send my kids to college, and take a vacation every once in a while, that's not asking too much. Can't do it on eight-twenty-five an hour, cannot do it, but you can certainly do it on the pay of the industry that's coming to Liberty County, through which we've already signed up. This is done. You get, very few authorities get the criticism that the Development Authority gets, because they're, you, you, the transparency, everybody wants to know everything that's going on. When a company is looking for a place to locate, they don't even give us, and we don't use their name, they have fictitious names, because it, you code the whole thing, because everybody's trying to get them. And with the Hyundai plan coming to Bryan County, and I'll be at a bill signing with the governor this week over there as we add monies for infrastructure, that's gonna have to happen here. We're gonna have to do some things that you just don't have the budget to do. State's gonna have to help out with infrastructure needs, and that is critically important, it is critically important. And so, this year's budget of around thirty-one billion dollars, it's about seven percent of two-point-two billion dollars more than last year's, the state budget. But believe it or not, at thirty-one million, billion, when I came to the legislature, it was twenty-seven million. But because of two thousand seven, eight, and nine, we backed all the way up, we're just getting back to where we were. And in spite of that, we have almost eleven million citizens in Georgia. That's a whole lot of citizens. Counties have greater responsibilities than they've ever had. I told the chamber last week that there is a bill that's kind of bouncing around to supplement the pay of deputy sheriffs. Small counties are hurting, Liberty is not anywhere near the bottom when it comes to pay deputy sheriffs. But I held some hearings about five years ago and went down to Macon County, and I talked to a jailer down there who worked for the sheriff's department, was making thirteen thousand four hundred dollars a year as a jailer. You've got departments that really can't afford to outfit their deputies. But the state cannot and must not mandate counties to increase pay unless we send the money to pay for this mandate. You can't afford it, it's terrible. But it's, it's, it's a big thing, and it always, you know, we're, a lot of times, we're in oxymoron in Atlanta. Everybody, "Back to blue, we love the police," blah, 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 but where is the money? Where is the money? And rural Georgia feels the brunt of it. Being a rural legislator is not easy, because the political power has moved north, and a lot of it, the needs are concentrated in the donut around Atlanta, and to the detriment of many rural communities. And I serve on Rural Council, the committee that we formed in the House to pep it up, and we've got a long ways to go. Internet should not be determined by your zip code. A kid living on the backside of Gum Branch or at Colonel's Island should not have to worry about sporadic internet, because they should have the same chance at a top-grade education as anybody else in this state. So, we've got to do better. Now, the governor and I have an ongoing laugh about this, sometimes he doesn't laugh too much about it, but I talk about five billion dollars that was sent here. But, um, most of our political leadership voted against, all of it, really. But nobody said, "I ain't gonna spend this money, we should send it back to Washington, those bad Washingtonians." Instead, we spent every penny of it, and that that ain't spent is getting ready to be spent. I just wanna make sure you all get your fair share of it, because there's a lot of money, and it's Build Back Better. And a lot of folk have made a lot of money building it back better, who was very much against it when we talked about, "Let's pass the Build Back Better." Um, I'm, I'm about that, you know, about like I am with gambling. I don't gamble, don't plan to gamble, but I support casinos, because I tell folk, "If you don't drink liquor, don't go in liquor store, that's easy." You get the revenue from it, though. And we're leaving close to seven hundred million, million dollars a year in tax revenue. And if you go and visit, and I've visited casinos all over the South, great deal of the Northeast, and when you go in the South to Biloxi, Florida, North Carolina, the parking lots are full of Georgia cars. And I always liked the little buses where some of my dear mothers of the church load and go to Biloxi, play the slot machine, and come home and talk about the eels of gambling on Sunday. But that's another day, another question, but happens all the time. Means a lot of revenue for Liberty County, and I came out in support of it. Oh, I heard things about me that I didn't know, some of them I wished I could do. They said Al Williams is going to, has bought a house down in Florida, he's gonna move to Florida when the casinos come here, okay? Not a bad idea, but not true. And then, they said the building that was being built was the casino, and we forced it on them. Well, was that Hooker Furniture, Mr. Chairman, Hooker Furniture built that, that's a game, it's not true. But we unfortunately, in the state, and the bills that we have, and I'll entertain questions in just a second, if you have some, we spend a lot of time talking about a boogeyman that nobody sees. We spend a lot of time passing bills that, that address a problem that does not exist. If a problem exists in California, that does not mean it exists in Georgia. But we vote like the boogeyman is here. I, this one's a very uncomfortable one, so you all don't get uncomfortable with me, but y'all know that I never play by the rules. The debate on critical race theory. Critical race theory has never been taught in a Georgia public school. It's never been even taught in a Georgia college, it never will be. It's primarily taught in law school. Everybody got excited about this boogeyman being taught in our schools. Never was a threat, never will be a threat. I know you can't picture it coming to Liberty County, I know I can't, but we're getting solutions for problems that don't exist, and it wastes a lot of time up there. And I know we hadn't had a pre-raise in twenty-three years, but y'all do pay us a little something to go up there, little as it is. That's another day. But, um, your legislature, overall, our job, first and foremost, is to pass a budget that's balanced. Secondly, is to make sure and write laws to help the citizens of Georgia, and to get rid of laws that hurt the citizens of Georgia. Sometimes, it takes forever. Constitution says we were in session forty days, and the saying around the Capitol is forty days and eighty nights. It can get mighty slow. But I'm thankful for being able to serve this district for the last twenty years, and you all have seen fit to send me back, sometimes I wonder what's wrong with you. But you've sent me back, I've tried to represent you to the best of my ability, sometimes even to the detriment of my colleagues in my caucus in the urban area, but I tell them, "I'm a rural legislator, and things sometimes are done a little differently down here than they are up there." But I'm always available, you can give me a call. I told folk that when I got home, don't call me the first week after the session, I don't wanna talk to anybody. I got called the night I got home, but that's part of it. There are many things I could say, most of you know I can take a long time saying it, too. But I'm gonna cut it short, you've got a, a large agenda, but I'll entertain any questions you might have, and, um, if I can't answer them, I will ignore them. Does anybody have any questions?
Since you're gonna pick on me, here's your time.
All right, sir.
Timber tax. And the regulation of the procedure that was in place now is under the state, where you have to go online, Mr. Brown, to sign up. How did that, I mean, that's actually hurting the county worse than what it was with us collecting timber after tax, I mean, timber after, uh, tax after cut?
Tax after cut. Now, I'm trying to make out, are you afford it or get it? What are you asking me?
He's saying it's not working.
It's not working.
What about it does not work? What's the difficulty, because I need to hear these things, what's the difficulty, Joey, that, what's the problem?
We don't have any control over it now, period. And where it was left, like, more or less, on a honor system, someone signs up. In the county, at least, we did have a little, one toe on it, that we could at least track them down, and, "Okay, this is what you owe on the timber that was cut." Now, every, the permit is issued from the state, so we don't know, really know anything about it.
Well, you got me, so you don't need, you just let me know what you need, but it, y'all are a tough crowd today. But let me say this now, as we move on, I, 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 I see the possibility, and I understand what you're saying. I personally, I think that, I don't like anybody to circumvent the law, but I've always been a proponent that I really think taxes should be equal across the board. I, 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 I think that sometimes it's a little unequal how we tax timber growers, but that's another day. My thing is, with automation and what we do now, I had a guy come clear off some land for me. This was a few years ago, and I was fascinated, 'cause he walked around with his phone and showed me where the property lines were. I forgot about the deal, I just wanted to see the phone. They're never going to be like they were, because I'm standing here talking, and some- Because I'm standing here talking and some EFO is sitting at the NSA to see if I say something that needs further investigation. They listen to us all the time. Automation says, and the state has asked to bring this under the umbrella of the state. I think counties are doing a good job of, of, of collecting it. But the problem is that as things move on, things are going to change and change they must. Now, do I think it's right now to rather have left it alone? But it is what it is. It's difficult. But home rule in Georgia is nothing but a saying. There is no such thing anymore. There used to be home rule. But now, if somebody doesn't like something I do in Liberty County, I can introduce it as local legislation. But if they wanna change it, snatch it and introduce it as general legislation and let me get outvoted on the floor. Used to be if you asked for something from a home standpoint, it was done. There is no such thing anymore. You got people living in Hayhara, Georgia introducing legislation for Atlanta, Georgia. You got people wanting to take over the airport who's got, the biggest airport they've got can handle one helicopter at the time. But they become, we dabble in everything. Don't be surprised. We just, not only do, I think we got somebody, Commissioner Walden, that rides around the state and looks for places to dabble. So this is not the first time and it won't be the last. It won't be. But we would hope, and Liberty County is such an exception, folks do better than here, than most places in Georgia. I listen, it's cities and counties that don't even speak to each other. The walls are so tough. You're, we have a good thing here and sometimes we get caught up in legislation that hurts us that wasn't intended for us. And, and that's one piece of it. But we have to learn. And then you got this young assistant county administrator, he needed to learn that system better and work on it. And y'all will ask us, that's his job, you do it, I don't wanna know it. I just can't cut this phone on. But figure out how to keep up with it. Because it's here and it is not going anywhere. Anyway, that's a terrible answer, but it's as truthful as I could be.
It's the tracking of it, that's what the issue is, being able to track it.
Being able to track it? That's it. And what you, you, well, here's what might surprise you. You know, some counties, you know, they're so closely held till some people get tracked and some folk don't. So the state had to step in. I mean, you know, come on now. Y'all already praying for Sheed Rock.
I don't have a question, but, no, I, I think you're in tune with, with our, you mentioned the bridge at I-95. And if I'm not mistaken, it's $25 billion worth of joint improvements we need on both sides of, of the interchange. So that's, and we've been speaking to several funding parties. And if you would just help us to reinforce that when you should, you know, cross paths with those people, with our senators and.
I'd be so glad to if you all give me the latest updates you have. Because some things I, you'll notice, and I've talked to you about this, Chairman, I never show up here until invited. Every once in a while, I have to remind people from Liberty County when a little delegation comes up there and I didn't even know they were coming. I said, well, I hope you didn't come for nothing. And they say, why you say that? I say, because you ain't gonna get it. You wasn't gonna ask me about it, so I'm not gonna help you with it. I promise you, I can stop it. The cross communication is so important. What do we need to do? Trent, the 25 million, where is it? Because the pecking order is still in charge. And some of the peckers you never hear about and you don't even know them by name. But you, 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 you've got to know where to put it. Because some folk got fancy titles and no authority. So every once in a while, I might know a little bird that's picking and calling that somebody else might not know. I know some would think we know them all, but we don't. You see, when, when I was in, y'all didn't know I had a job before this job, when I used to make a living, I was a productivity consultant, vice president and chief analyst. And my rule from the chairman of my company was, Al, if the person doesn't have a corner office and can't give a yes or no, don't even talk to them because you're wasting your time. And I've just kept that with me. But there's some things that flow downhill. Okay?
We can make sure that you're informed, sir.
Thank you very kindly. It would, I'd do all I can to help you and it would certainly stroke my ego, so.
Yes, sir. We can do that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Don't, uh, just stop right there, um, Comit, uh, Mr. Williams. I brought this up and a lot of the people on the board, and I don't know if you've heard it, but I wanna, I wanna say something that's not changed since you were a little feller. And that's been a long time ago. But we have talked about our coast, the hurricane preparedness and stuff like this. I mentioned one day to Congressman Carter, I said, the coast, there's one way on and one way off. I mean, even a house has got a back door. But those folks that's on the coast are gonna be in a bad situation. It's two lane road, it's very narrow, and that needs to be addressed as, in whatever funding is available. And, and I'm saying, um, you know, in Tybee, they'll put a bridge on top of a bridge to get folks off. But right now, we're still driving on what I remember is Georgia 38. The old coast road or whatever.
Exactly right.
We need to have funding to widen that road in, I mean, in case. And I hope nothing ever happens down there. But it's, uh, I've seen the storms that's come through, Commissioner Geller and I rode down and, and I know Commissioner Stevens and the chairman have. And when you have a little blow that comes through, but getting those people out is gonna be, I mean, if they all had to leave four hours before the storm or the day before the storm, they're all, they're gonna be just packed with vehicles. And even to go back in and restore it is gonna be an issue.
It's gonna be terrible.
Funding needs to be, I mean, I don't know if it needs to come from Atlanta, if it needs to come from Washington, if it needs to come from FEMA or wherever, but.
All of the above, Commissioner.
We've talked about it and we've talked about it, but I'll tell you, it's, um, not saying it's just fell on, you know, the, the table and got kicked off, but we, we've got to have that done. Any other end of the county, Commissioner Thriss's district, they can come to Hinesville or they can go to Ludewishee or Glenville. And here, we can go through, you know, to Pembroke and we can go north. But getting off of that island is something we gotta address.
You're exactly right. And, and I think that, like anything else, I'd like to see this board send something that I can meet with Ms. Purcell and members of the board up there and at least put us in the queue. I'd, I'd like to see, because you're exactly right. We remember many years ago, I was just in legislation shortly when we had to evacuate. I've never seen a bigger mess in my life. Took my wife 14 hours and she didn't even live on Colonel's Island to get to Atlanta. I was in Atlanta. You're right. And, and it's too late, something happens. We've got to be proactive. And I, I'd certainly entertain some talk about that and let's, let's, let's throw it. There is a lot of money that's come to Georgia. And I'll be frank, that money is, is in a line that folk who beg the hardest and the most persistent gets it. A lot of money. I know a lot of places that has gotten a lot of money. So I, I, I thank you for that and you're exactly right. And that's something that we, we kinda need to put in the queue. Put in the queue. Let me say this and I'm finished. You don't believe that, Donald, well, you know, I'm Baptist, that don't mean nothing. But I will say this and I am through. I put pins on each of you and I think I've gotten everybody, anybody not gotten a pin, that's because, that's just a little show of appreciation. Uh, a little thing called COVID got in the way and certainly set us back on the plans for the statue. And, but we're getting back on track. The cost changed in those two years by 60% up on the cost of that statue. 60%. That's unbelievable. But we're getting back on cue. And one thing, we, we certainly, the county has done its share. You've, you've, you've been gracious, you've approved it and we appreciate it individually. Checks are made out to the Raff Quaterman Memorial Fund. You can give it to me anytime, cash check or money order. Don't do Cash App on big money, but do that, where we can build the statue. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
Good to have you. We'll keep the communications line open, sir.
All right.
Art and Laurie. Your top loader.
As we speak.
Good noon, uh, good afternoon, everyone. The rezoning petition 2023-016LC, a rezoning petition was submitted by Daybreak Industrial Inc., owner to rezone 10.12 acres, more or less, from AR1, A1 to I1, which is industrial districts for a storage warehouse. The property is located at 2873 South Coastal Highway. And as further described, the map and parcel is 190022. Um, on the April 4th Board of Commissioners meeting, the petition was tabled. And like Joey said earlier, it does not have to go back into a public hearing.
Okay. All right, uh. Uh, Laurie?
Yes, sir.
What was some of the stipulations that was?
Yeah, I, I think during and following your last meeting, I was asked to speak with the, the applicant and the members of the community who were present at the meeting who voiced concerns, uh, to try and develop some conditions that might help mitigate possible adverse effects of a rezoning. I've done that. And I think earlier I circulated, uh, proposed conditions to rezoning that would accomplish that. I don't know, and it's on the screen. I'm not sure if we can pull it up. Yep.
We have it on the screen.
But, uh, these were developed after discussing the conditions with both the applicant and the community members. And I think that both parties received the conditions well. To my knowledge, there's no objection to imposition of the conditions. And again, they're, uh, would be imposed to help redress some of the potential adverse consequences. Uh, you know, I think the biggest concern of the residents was further encroachment of industrial use in their community. And of course, one of the conditions makes clear that the use is limited solely to small shop, um, uh, metalwork as well as related storage by Daybreak. Uh, and that no other uses, whether or not permitted by the industrial zoning classification or not, will be permitted. So the uses are strictly limited to those uses that are proposed by Daybreak as well. No other buildings or facilities can be constructed on the property. Uh, and there's a general statement as well, uh, letting everyone know, uh, public record that it's not the intention that this approval or rezoning, should you approve it, uh, will be used, uh, to, as an invitation for further industrial rezoning. You know, this is a unique situation and simply by rezoning this to industrial does not mean that you welcome the rezoning of nearby or adjacent properties even. And there are other conditions imposed, but they're all reasonable. You can't have, um, loud noises or lights or emissions to disturbance of adjoining landowners. Uh, and typically, any, any activity between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 PM will be regarded as a nuisance. Uh, other conditions, uh, they have to maintain the existing buffers around the perimeters of the property. And if you've looked at the aerials, most all the perimeter is heavily wooded. Uh, and the operations are, I think, effectively screened from public view now. Uh, but those have to be maintained for the duration of the project. And then, uh, importantly, number six, they'll also have to comply with whatever other statutes or regulations, uh, might apply to the project. You know, in particular, I think DOT approval of perhaps access to the property as mentioned. And to the extent DOT recruit, you know, in, requires any sort of improved access, that will have to be complied with as well. But of course, you folks don't concern yourself with those matters, that's a separate issue for the Department of Transportation. Uh, but again, I discussed the conditions with both the area residents who were present at the last meeting as well as the applicant. And I believe that the conditions are acceptable. Should you folks decide to approve the rezoning, it's recommended that conditions be adopted.
Okay.
For answering any questions?
The only question that I got left was, uh, license, business license, would you go over that?
Yes, sir, it was discussed last meeting. If a business license had been applied for, it had not. Uh, but since our meeting, the applicant has requested that a business license be issued. And of course, our Buildings Office, uh, said that once the property was rezoned, that a business license could be issued. But the applicant has requested the license be issued. Uh, additionally, they will have to pay, uh, occupation taxes associated with the business if they're operating in Liberty County. But they've made good faith effort to make application and that's pending, uh, subject to your approval of rezoning.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Kelly on number five, I don't know if you can see it.
Yes, sir.
And you, you know, there's, there's, they got some things in there that they said, you know, bright lights, you know, you know, who judges that? You, I don't, you know, you can have lights, but not bright lights. You can have odors, but not strong odors. You can have noises, I guess, but loud, not loud noises. I mean, where, who, who, who judges these things?
The courts will. I mean, these sorts, yeah, these things, sorts of things are generally regarded as, as nuisances. And there's a whole body of case law that's been developed to determine what sort of activities constitute an impermissible nuisance and, and what activities don't. And so, uh, you know, if we have an issue where there's intermittent noise at certain hours that disturbs adjoining landowners and it continues, uh, if it becomes an issue, you know, either adjoining landowners or the county can press the issue and bring it before the courts and have the matter decided.
So, uh, you respond to a complaint?
Yes. And of course, certain of your ordinance has already addressed that, one of which being your noise ordinance. So if it violates your noise ordinance, for example, then the county can.
Based on a decibel reading?
Yes, can take enforcement action. But, you know, from the, from the statements of the adjoining landowners that we've received to date, uh, I guess, you know, their, their, um, metalwork activities have been ongoing, I guess, for some time now. And the adjoining landowners, we've received statements from, I think, most of the adjoining landowners indicating that they support the rezoning and have no objection to it. Um, so apparently, their activities to date have not disturbed the adjoining landowners.
I guess, you know, the reason I brought that up, you know, my concern would be that you, if someone is opposed to it and they could just be on the phone every five minutes just lodging a complaint against something that's just to aggravate the, the man that's trying to, trying to run a business. That, that's, that was my concern. I mean, you know, uh, bright lights, um, loud noises, um, strong odors. I mean, you know, is that subjective or?
I mean, but most nuisance cases revolve around a reasonable person standard. So again, it's an issue that if, if, if it requires it, the courts can get involved and determine whether or not it constitutes a nuisance or a violation of our ordinance. But I, I'm not too concerned with it. I mean, you have that, that potentiality in any project. You know, people can lodge complaints whether they're well founded or not. So if they're well founded, the county and the landowner will confer and hopefully it can be remedied. And if not, if the county thinks it appropriate, they can take legal action to, to redress it. So it's just like any other project in that regard. Uh, you know, any other projects, if you have proper zoning, you still can't engage in activities that constitute a nuisance to the detriment of your adjoining landowners. Uh, so again, I don't think it's a, a big issue for concern.
Okay.
But it's a pledge that the applicant's been willing to make and I think it's an important one to the area residents.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question out of there. Because that was a concern that I had also, that kind of putting restrictions on a, a person who's willing and has been in the county and, and has employees, um, and putting the workforce to work. And then we try to put these restrictions on him. Did we pull these like out of another area of our coats or? I mean, just in item five and then in item three, um, an additional building, you know, he. You know, he can't put another building up unless he comes to the Commissioners or to L C. P. C.?
The Board Commissioners.
So it wouldn't go back to L C. P. C. or like? Or them to approve it and then back?
You folks, you folks could, you know, request that they review it and make a recommendation. But typically, your building inspection office will approve building permits if rezoning is proper and all other conditions have been met. So rather than go to your own building inspections office, it will simply go to the Board of Commissioners.
You know, if there's any other type of disturbance there or a site plan, if he was wanting to put, that that wouldn't have to go to them? It would go to inspections and then back to us?
Yeah, if if they plan on building a new building or other facility, they'd have to get the Board of Commissioners approval. And I guess the the two conditions that are somewhat related is approval of future construction of those buildings and approval of expanded use of the property for other uses other than that's that's what's proposed. And that's intended to address the concern about industrial use in the community and further encroachment of industrial use. Now, it could come before the Commissioners, whether it's next week or two years or ten years from now, that industrial use in the community or surrounding areas might be appropriate. And if that's the case, and if the applicant would like to expand his industrial use, just like any other landowner, he would come before the board and say, look, I would like to expand the use to allow whatever the industrial use might be. So but at least with these conditions, they're limited to basically the current business operations. And for example, he could not sell the property to a third party, and that party build a, you know, industrial facility unrelated to his business. If he wanted to do that, you'd have to come back before the board, the intention again being simply to control the industrial use that you folks are permitting and weigh the competing interests of the neighborhood and the business owner to conduct his business. And again, I don't think any of the conditions will hamper his business activities. I had discussions with the landowner and his attorney, and they've indicated their willingness to to comply.
They 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 agree with what we have here pretty much?
That's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
Wow, my mic was cut off. We discussed this kind of in depth from our previous meeting. And I think both parties, I think that's what the motion was correct, that that both parties kind of got together and discussed everything.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So and and this is what, from that to this, correct?
Yes, sir. I was kind of intermediary.
You were like the liaison?
That's right.
In between. Right. We discussed this at our last meeting already, so.
Mr. Chair.
Back and forth. There were some conditions that were proposed that the applicant had more concern with, and conditions were revised. And I think it's in a state now that it's workable for the landowner. And I think it addresses the concerns of the community residents as well.
Okay.
You know, and again, going back to number five and as Commissioner first said, number three, and and my concern is, you know, there's going to be a lot of growth in Liberty County that's already happening. And, you know, I don't know if this opens up for for the next business to open up. And then you've got a neighbor and adjoining landowner that wants to just kind of, you know, put you in line with something that that they would like to see you do before you can, you know, open up for business. I mean, you know, I don't know if, but if everybody get together and agree, but it's just tough for, like Commissioner Jones, he's next door, and I'm trying to start something. And he opposes it. And then he said, but it's okay if you do these things. And that there's a lot of growth that's going to be coming in Liberty County. I just think that, you know, putting putting a straitjacket on on someone because of what his neighbor would rather, you know, to make the neighbor happy. And I'll just throw this in, and then I'll be finished with it. The guy lived in my neighborhood, I get up and go walking on Saturday morning, and I know he had a rooster because I heard it. But we, you know, my wife called the police, and the police came. But the rooster didn't crow while the police was there. Police left. Now, it was smart rooster, you know, the police left, the rooster crowed again. I mean, you know, it's illegal to have roosters in Heinzville. And and that's what that's what the call was about. But he didn't go back there looking to see what they're rooster there. He stood in the street and said, hey, I don't hear nothing, and I'm out of here. And so you got this, and somebody's going to say, well, maybe if he do these ten things. And that's, you know, that's where I'm headed with that. But, you know, we, and I don't know if this opens up the door for for more of the same.
No, I understand your concern specifically, but I think it's important to point out, this is, these concerns aren't specific to this project. I think you folks know there's a broader dynamic at work. And there's tension in our community between some regard as progress in industrial use and others who like our community the way it is. And so you've been presented with these questions and other industrial rezonings recently. And I expect you're going to have this difficult jog of balancing these competing interests with respect to future rezonings. And in our most recent industrial rezonings, you have applied conditions which you have not typically applied before. And again, trying to address residents' concern and mitigate the adverse impacts, but also recognize that, you know, this business development is important to our community and the prosperity of our residents. And so I think to date, you've done a commendable job with that Balancing Act. And so this is just another example of you folks engaging in that balancing and doing the best you can. And, you know, we've done everything we can to discuss with area residents their concerns, discuss it with the property owner, and done our best to address the concerns of both in a way that hopefully business will prosper and, you know, the community will remain, I guess, as, you know, as best it can, the way the residents would like it to.
You said it very well, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'll say this, and I'll be ready to make a motion.
Ready?
Let's go.
The, oh, you want?
No.
No. The reason why this is where it's at, because first, putting that kind of facility up in a A one, A R. one was not the appropriate place, but is there. So being as being the commissioner for that district, I'm willing to work with what we have, what the county attorney has put together. And you say it's pretty well agreeable.
Yes, sir. They can speak for themselves, but my conversation to date, so I've gotten, again, I've tried to address the concerns that have been raised, and to my understanding, people are are accepting of the conditions. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to receive one.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation that is presented by the county attorney for the approval to I. one.
Second. You're going to help formulate that?
Yes, sir. I prepared this to basically for your adoption, to enter it into the record. And I want to make clear, the landowner knows this and everyone else. But if if there should be, you know, additional businesses in the future, like they want to expand their warehouse or something, they're free to come back before the board. And I fully expect if it's a reasonable request, that you folks would grant it. So again, you folks aren't intending to interfere with their business operations. You're just, you know, trying to engage in that difficult balancing act that you have been in the past and will continue to, I think, for some time.
Yeah. Good outcome, parties having worked together.
We got a motion and a second. Mr. Chairman, I want to say one thing, and Commissioner Stevens, I know this gentleman appreciates you supporting him. I don't know him, but I do know Charlie, but he's about the only one I do know. But I do, I do think that there is some verbiage that will have to change in this that which is, you know, number eight on the zoning analysis, Lori, which says, would this change cause a domino effect that encourage sprawl? I mean, that will have to change because we'll we'll have, or every one of them will be a case by case from here on out. But I support it. I think we can put these people to work and let them move on. I welcome their, you know, whatever they're going to build down there, just as long as it's not noisy and they don't need lights to do it.
All in favor of the motion, Mr. Stevens? All right. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, folks.
Chairman.
Thank everybody for working together on that. It's not been easy.
One question for Mr. Anderson. It's a safety issue. You're good. Check your addresses because the address on the mobile home is the same as the address at the facility in the back. God for sake, if you have to call for emergency help, they would not know unless there's a fire which facility to go at. So you, there's no such thing in Liberty County as two facilities having the same address, if you follow what I'm saying. Thank you.
All right.
Thank all parties for working together for the solution. Thank you.
Ms. Lori?
Chair, if we could go to a public hearing for variance?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor?
Okay.
Any other parties may be excused should they elect to.
Okay, the next variance request I have is two zero two three zero two two L C. A variance request was submitted by Krista Brown Horn to replace an existing six-foot fence with an eight-foot fence. The property is located at four twenty nine Clark Street, down at Isle of Wight, in the unincorporated area of Liberty County. The map and parcel is two eighty one B. one zero three. The next slide, of course, is just the public notifications that we have to put out, legal ad, and post the sign on the property. Got kind of two vicinity maps here for you. One's just a larger view that shows the whole island, and over here, of course, is ninety five. I'm sure you're probably familiar with Isle of Wight. You can see I'm going to show a larger picture, but the the property, of course, is in the small red square right down here off of Clark Street. And the next slide is the vicinity map, and it just shows that it's between Clark Street and East First. Zoning map, we get to, it's all, although the lots down there, pretty much the whole place is zoned R. two. This is the narrative from the applicant. I'm just going to mainly read the the points on here. Ms. Brown Horn, the owner of four twenty eight Clark Street, is requesting a variance to modify her existing fence. They currently have both wood privacy fence and a chain link fence. The the fence was put there by Mr. Crowley that built the home in in twenty fifteen. They would like to just replace the six-foot wood pickets with an eight-foot fence on the east side of the property for just to, they have a six-foot now, they just want to do an eight-foot. And this is just a plot plan showing the home on the lot. They're all the sixty by two hundred lots here. The next slide shows the, excuse me, let me get my paper, shows the existing in the, the yellow is the existing six-foot fence right here. And she just wants to take that six-foot fence and put her an eight-foot on this side of the property at this time. Here's some photos of the existing side of the fence where she would like to put the eight-foot fence. And the other one is just a picture that you can see of the chain link fence on the side. And again, this is just shows where they want to put the eight-foot fence instead of the the six foot. And the Liberty County ordinance is the projection in two yards and courts. A wall or fence six feet in height or under or higher is a retaining wall, but it be erected within the limits in any yard, not extending beyond the front setback line. Any wall or fence in the front yard, not including a retaining wall, shall be limited to the forty-eight inches in the front setback. The conditions for granting the variance, there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to this particular piece of property in questions because of its size or shape. No, the application of the appendix in this particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship. Said no. Such conditions are peculiar to this particular piece of property. No. Relief, if relief is granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the good or impair the public purpose of intent of the ordinance, provided, however, that no variance may be granted for the use of the land building structure that is prohibited by the appendix. And the L C. P. C. recommended approval for her to be able to have the eight-foot fence. There is also a special condition, said the eight-foot fence shall not exceed past the front setback line. The portion of the fence within the twenty-five-foot front setback shall be no greater than the forty-eight inches in the height per the ordinance.
Do you have any?
Yes.
Come, state your name, and just tell us about your your request, about your project. If I got it right, if I'm wrong, correct me. You're going from a four-foot fence to eight-foot?
It's both. So I was about to say, I want to make one clarification. So on the east side of our property, it is both a four-foot black.
Sorry, say your name first, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Krista Brown Horn. So on the east side of our property, we have both a four-foot black chain link fence and also a six-foot wood privacy fence. What I'm requesting is to take that entire east side and make it an eight-foot wood privacy fence. Our fence does not start until about twenty foot off the road anyway, which you could seen in one of the pictures. You know, it's enough that you can actually pull into our driveway, get out of your car to open up the gate. So it's set back off of the road, twenty foot. So it would start there and then go to the back end of our property.
Looks nice.
So where that, so where that fence is showing back in the back, that's where you've continued coming out to the front?
So I, in my narrative, I did ask for the back. I'll point to it. Yeah, so basically, the front, the front piece that's on the road, because like this picture on the right, you're standing in the road that's looking at our house, the front black link chain link fence would stay. But if you look on the side, there's also a four-foot black chain link fence. And then about where our house starts, that's where the six-foot picks up. So I'm asking for the entire east side of our property to be eight-foot.
Who's district is? Action.
Mr. Parks?
It's Horn.
Horn, no.
Oh, you want Lori? Okay, sorry.
Was there any opposition or comment from the public on the request?
Yes, sir. We had four, four people, had two emails. One gentleman spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. No objections.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to receive it.
I make a motion that we grant approval of this variance request as recommended by the L C. P. C. with standard and special conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Just in the effort of fairness, to be sure, you know, someone emailed or came, but there's no one here today to speak against this. All right. All right. In the first discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Okay, we got one, well, we got two more for you, and they're all down at Isle of Wight. Yeah. Mr. Jones, all right. This is variance request two zero two two three dash oh two three. Again, this is one for Mr. Wheeler that y'all have done in the past. A variance request was submitted by Josh Wheeler to reduce the side yard setback to ten feet as opposed to fifteen feet. The fifteen-foot side required setback in an R. two zoning. The property is located on West First Street in the unincorporated areas of Liberty County. Map and parcel is two eighty C. one oh five. Again, we have to show the public notification as our legal ad and the sign posted on the lot. And this is on the west side of Isle of Wight to the left of ninety five on this one. In the vicinity map, the lot that Mr. Wheeler has proposed is, of course, right here.
Is this that, Mr. Chair, is this that same subdivision?
What was that?
That we? Mr. Brown?
It is, it's in the old Isle of Wight subdivision. Two sides of subdivision.
Man, this feels like round all day.
With the narrow locks.
Right. So who's?
Yep.
Were there any comments or comments or from the?
There was one gentleman at the L C. P. C. meeting that was, didn't like it too much, I guess. He opposed, but we had no calls come in to our office, no letters or no calls, except except the one gentleman that spoke at the meeting.
And, and they always announce at the meetings that he's coming here, so they have the chance to also speak here as well. And kind of like Commissioner Frage said, it's the same scenario out on Isle of Wight, where they have these narrow lots where-
Right. They're the non-conforming with the sixty by one hundred.
But also, this was before the formation of LCPC. That, that subdivision is, is, is pretty-
Real.
Yes, sir.
Aged, so.
It's been in existence for a very long time.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Just one question. Would it be better for us to just change the, some type of ordinance over there in that particular area, so we won't have to go through this over and over?
Yeah, we can explore that with Kelly to see-
Okay.
If we can do it for just a particular area or whether-
Right, right, right. I, I think that's what, what we do need to look at when we're dealing with our comprehensive plan and stuff, like these older, particular areas where we are rezoning because of growth, that we go through this over and over and over again?
Right.
Don't have a call Jeff saying that the unified ordinance was-
That's just what I was gonna say, that this is probably when we get the new U D O adopted.
That, that you all are working on now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that should take care of all these setbacks. Yep.
Thank you so much.
Help is on the way.
Help is on the way.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Because Ground Hall Day was not even one of my favorite movies either.
I'd like to make a motion. I rec, uh, make the motion that we accept the recommendation by LCPC for approval of the variance request, uh, twenty twenty-three oh twenty-three dash L C with standard conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Want you to second further discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All right, motion passed. Ms. Laurie?
And this is going to be very similar, mostly the same vicinity maps. This one is a variance request two oh two-three oh two-four. A variance request was submitted by Mr. Bob Manker, owner, to reduce the side yard setback to ten feet as opposed to fifteen in the R two zoning. He wants to place a mobile home on the property, and his lot is actually on East First Street. The map and parcel is two eighty-one B oh sixty-six. Again, there's the ads in the paper, the same vicinity map. This one's still right on East First Street. When you come in, there's the Jericho River, and East First Street's right here. This is a larger vicinity map, so you could see the lot, the zoning, exact same thing as all R two. The narrative from the applicant, he pretty much would like to have a variance to place his mobile home Longway on the lot, and I have a sketch that I can show you on that. It would put, it would allow them to put a sixty by twenty-eight mobile home Longway on the property. He does have some really pretty oak trees on this piece, and if he can put it in Longway, then he can save some of those trees, and he thinks it would look better, too, to the neighborhood to put it in Longway. He lives right now about six hours away, so he wasn't able to come tonight, but he is retiring, and he would like to have that as permanent home.
Welcome to the area.
This is a double-wide then?
Yes, sir. This is, now, this particular lot actually is eighty feet. It happens to have like a sixty-foot, sixty-foot regular lot, but with this particular parcel, there's like a twenty-foot strip that goes down, and it's gonna be sort of on this side of the property, but if he still, he still needs the, the ten-foot side setback to get the mobile home Longway, which would look better on the lot, and it would save, to me, save the oak trees that's in the back, which they sit sort of back here, back right here on the property.
Commissioner Jones, listen, he said he's not here, he lives six hours away, so.
Yes. His family owns Melody's Restaurant, and I believe the, the lady actually was gonna come, but she called at the last minute and said that she, she was coming to sort of speak on his behalf, but we have talked with him several times in the office.
Any naysayers?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, let me take your question.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation from LCPC to grant approval of this variance request with special, with standard conditions.
Is that second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion second, we accept the recommendation LCPC on twenty twenty-three zero two-four. Any further discussion?
To Liberty County, happy retirement.
All in favor, show your hands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion come out of a public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, all in favor, show your hands. Back in the regular session. Mr. Long?
Hey, Trent.
Yeah.
How you doing?
All right. Couple things we're gonna go through today. Bill Carter Road is the first one on the agenda. We did take bid for Bill Carter Road. bidder on this was Platinum Paving with a contract price of one million, two hundred twelve thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars even. We recommend that the county board of commissioners enter in a contract with Platinum Paving in the amount of one million, two hundred twelve thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars plus ten percent contingency. Marion has most of the money and will have it.
That's the two-foot show of, two-foot?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's widening and getting it, and rebuilding that part of it. Yes, sir.
The only thing I, I know, you probably mentioned it one time before, how, what are we gonna do about the tree? Just before you, are we gonna come out?
No, I'm leaving, the tree's still there. We can take the tree. And I had, I do not have the tree coming out, but if we need to take it out, we can take out the tree.
Because that's gonna put that, that two-foot, Mr. Chairman's gonna put that-
Pretty close.
Pretty close to it. That's the only thing that I, that I-
And we can take it out.
It's a landmark.
Yeah.
It's a landmark, but it could be a grave mark.
Yeah. Yes, sir, but we can, we can work around it or keep it.
Well, let's, let's take a close look at it, okay?
I'd be glad to do that.
Uh, Trent, will there be apron from the highway in on them driveways?
Yes, sir.
How far?
Oh, gosh. I know we-
Every driveway ought to have at least a ten-foot.
We added, we added an apron on every one of these driveways.
Well, I know that I went with Commissioner Giller in Homestown, and that was something that was left out. Those need to have aprons all the way-
Yes, sir, we, we went, I think we go at least six feet on every one of them. Uh, we didn't go all the way to the right of way, but we did do turnout so that we're protecting everybody.
Well, if it's not, then that, of course, that's Mr. Stevens' area, but I would say that pulling up there to the road and then bumping up on that asphalt-
Well, there's a pretty good change in grade with this, and that's one reason we went so far enough back, because every driveway is far enough back so we don't have a huge bump.
I never thought that, so, so aprons are optional?
Well, they're optional, but for the most part, they're a necessity.
So, Liberty County standards leave them as optional?
So, what we've been doing historically is if there was an apron there, we kept the apron. If there was not an apron there, we didn't put an apron back. We kind of went back with what was there. If we were overlaying a roadway, we would run out a foot to eighteen inches at each driveway, but we weren't paving the entire driveway within the right of way. So, that's just what we've done historically, and we can do more. It just becomes a matter of cost as we go along doing it.
I think you, you should cost them out either way and give the commissioners the option of-
I can certainly do that.
I'm kind of feeling that in this day and age, it ought to be something that's done.
Standard.
Yeah, it ought to be a standard, but I won't make that decision.
We can certainly make that change, because-
Right, so we don't have to go back in the future, just like Prime example in my district, where we have some curb and gutter, and I still have some ditches, and it's costing me so much money to put a sidewalk now. So, whatever we, we need to do, to make sure that we don't have to go back, I'd rather it's good, put that. So, if we need aprons, make sure we have aprons.
I'm good with that. I, I, that's, that is wonderful.
When I'm on the grill, so.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You, the commissioner, the first recommendation, give, give them an option.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to do that, because I think that's something we really need. It's a good thing.
Country, I guess, doesn't really make-
More rural, rural area.
Bill, we can bring it up for options, see what you want to do.
Mary Todd Road.
You can see what the costs are, and whether you like it or not, if you don't, want to spend the money for it?
It can be rural today, but tomorrow could be something else.
Trent, is this, is this including the replacing of the, uh, safety strips?
The, uh, rumble strips?
Rumble strip, strips?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Because I know some project we've gone on, and we didn't include that, and it was left out, so.
My fault, yes, sir. We got that.
Okay.
And, and, and you said this is coming out of S P L O S?
S P L O S, N T S P L O S.
N T S P L O S. And L M E?
And L M E.
How, how much have we?
What, what's, what's the end game on Bill Carter?
So, we'll end it with this, is we'll have a road that's not falling apart. Uh, it will still remain two lanes, but it'll have two solid twelve-foot lanes instead of one eleven-foot lane, or two eleven-foot lanes, and it'll be set up to accommodate the traffic that comes across it, because right now, that's kind of a de facto cut through.
Right, it is a-
I mean, I, I get it. I, I just know we, we've been putting a lot of work into Bill Carter. I'm just trying to make sure that, that what we're doing is-
Yeah.
That we have an end game towards that.
Safer and stronger.
Yeah.
Safer and stronger.
Because when Lewis, when they redo the bridge, then, well, Lewis Frage is already, already a heavy traffic road now, and it brings you up to Bill Carter.
Man, I remember when Lewis Frage was a dirt road. I'm that old.
Let's maximize our time.
You must've used diapers.
Chairman, take a motion.
Chair, I make a motion that we accept the bid for Lewis, I mean, Bill Carter Road.
Motion second, we accept the bid presented for the improvements on Bill Carter Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor, show your hands, please. All right, motion approved. Mr. Trent?
Thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is the Island's Highway Safety Improvements. We've been working for a long time developing our Department of Transportation pre-qualifications and getting qualified to do work to the DOT standard. We do have all those pre-qualifications now, and been working hard on trying to develop what we need to do for Island's Highway to benefit the entirety of Liberty County, and especially the east side of I ninety-five. So, everybody should have a copy of the contract for our work to do that. It's roughly a twenty-five million dollar job. So, I just, I'll open it for questions that you may have of me.
You said this is Island's Highway, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where, let me go back. The bridge replacement down there.
Over I ninety-five?
No, the other one. Oh, this is just for the one right in the warehouses at, right?
Yes, this is where warehouses, talking about down in the box covert.
Don't worry about it. Yeah.
Yeah, we got funding for down at the box covert at Leaning Tree separately. We should be going out to bid on that very soon.
Okay, I just want to mention something about that, Chairman, Mr. Chair, when we get through with this real quickly, okay?
Okay.
So, um, talk me through, this is a, I mean, not overly thick document, there's several pages here, so this is-
Yes, sir. So, basically, what we'll end up doing is we'll go through all the planning processes of the followed order Department of Transportation Plan Development Process. We will be subcontracting, if you look, the second page is the DOT Pre-Qualification Page, and I'm gonna refer to it quite a bit. Part of the things that we don't do are the, in the first block on the left, Transportation Planning, that's the one, one point oh-six A through G. We've got to complete all of those. Those are what we call the history and environmental. If we want to get any federal funding on this, or Ray will talk Al Williamson being able to get us some money, we'll need to jump through these hoops to make sure we do that. So, and especially some of these ecology items, as we do them, we have to do surveys of certain species of animals and plants during certain seasons of the year.
Critters, they're called critters.
Somebody do a jig last month. I don't dance much, so. So, we'll be do, we'll be subcontracting with firms to do that. You know, I've got the traffic engineer that's working with us, and we're updating our traffic study and trying to make sure that we have everything planned like we should. And then we'll be doing all the geometry and the surveying for that. Now, the, the dollars that you see on the contract are a little bit less than have been on the estimates that I've been showing you guys for the last six months or so, because we've done part of the work already. Some of the surveying, we've already done, some of the traffic study stuff we've already done. So, we made sure we credited that against what we've been showing you in the estimates.
Let me help you out. Mr. Brown, have you looked through this document?
I have, sir.
And, and your?
It's a standard engineering agreement. This, this really gonna span six years, so it includes everything he described to get the project ready, including construction drawings, all the approval processes needed by all the agencies, and then also contract administration and construction observation when it does in fact go to, go to construction.
Maybe oversimplify, this is one of those tests we need to do the road improvements in that area.
Yes, sir, in fact, this is a contract to do all the engineering requirements in the road project as you see it. T S P L O S is allocated to fund the engineering service preparation up to the construction phase, and then the construction phase, as you're aware, gets paid back. A portion of these actually get paid back by developer groups.
All right, got it. Chairman, take a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the highway improvement program for Island's Highway.
Second? Motion second, we accept the agreement presented by Mr. Long, for his part of the total project to make the project happen. Without it, we can't get it done, so. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
We'll call you with any questions that we share.
Please do.
Mr. Chair, I have one question for you. On the, the bridge by the leaning tree, are you, are you anticipating on closing off that road when you're working on?
What we're going to end up doing is probably close one lane at a time. We'll put up traffic control devices, you know, like the little lights behind the top retreat road.
On, on, on our retreat road?
Yes. So, because what I'll have to do is, I've got to build half of it to the middle of the road first, and the hardest part's gonna be the first half, because I'm making it about fifteen-foot longer on either side, and so, when I get the first half built, I got a little more room, but, well, I'm, when, while I'm building the first half, I'm constrained for space. Once I build the first half and I move the traffic to the other side, I have a little bit more room to make that.
This will be built, looking, trying to look into the years to come if that road gets widened, or is it gonna be right?
No, it's, it's, we couldn't get enough funding to go that way. So, we are wider than what we are now, which will accommodate the wider shoulders. It'll allow us to have eight-foot shoulders and twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot of lane width, some paved shoulders, uh, some eight-foot shoulders and a nice slope to get down to it. Plus, it gives us, it's a nine-by-nine box covert, we're going to a ba, basically a ten-by-ten box covert.
Okay.
And that box covert is fifty years old? Something like that, it's pretty old.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just, just a quick question. I, I know a couple of years ago, we implemented, and I guess you know where I'm about to go, with the N W B policy?
I have a whole report, Mr. Brown.
I appreciate that.
Showed, uh, looked, reviewed it, and I have not emailed it to you.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back and email that to you when I get done.
Thank you so much, but, but more importantly, not, not just that, uh, Mr. Chair, can, can we, can we get, uh, Ms. Cliff on our agenda pretty soon, so we could kind of-
Sure.
Talk about that in, in, in a more in-depth discussion? Talk about that in, in, in a more in-depth discussion again. And then also to see if we can or will put together some type of, of local participation as well. Because, I mean, we, we have a lot of projects going in and out of Liberty County. I just want to make sure that, that, uh, you know, our local businesses have an opportunity to participate.
Yes, sir.
If we can. That'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, next one on, uh, item is, uh, the gumbrance always convenience center. Uh, we talked about the time extension that was needed. They are coordinating with the Public Works Department to move some trash and waste over so that we can swap sides. So they can work on the existing side. Um, they requested a time extension that would take us to June twentieth, which is, we're beginning of May, so that's only a month and a half to be finished with that job. Now, the roadways are done, the drive-through part's done. Just swapping over and getting all the asphalt in the site is our next big task.
I'm trying to see if they're waiting to get that done before they bring in the last, to actually asphalt the road itself.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we need a motion and.
Twenty twenty-three for the completion of the gumbrance convenience.
Second motion, second, we approve this extension date request. Any further discussion?
Uh, the only, only thing is, uh, it's actually, uh, I guess a, a couple lines up, it's saying a hundred and twenty calendar days?
Yes.
Is that a hundred and twenty calendar days from April twenty-sixth that it was brought up, or?
No, no, it is from the, uh, last day of the last change order that we did. We've already done a, a small change order for time. So what it does is that takes us from the contract notice to proceed through all our change orders to.
To, to complete them.
Okay. I was just trying to get clarification, thank you.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Alright.
All in favor, show of hands, please. Motion passing.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, where are we? Twenty twenty-four Public Defender Budget, Mr. Brandon Clark. He's, he's been patient. Thank you for waiting on him, Brandon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Sir.
Sir.
We've been here a long time, so.
Don't worry, I don't like to talk a whole lot, so. I know most lawyers don't say that.
Will you read this tonight?
Absolutely. The, uh, where are we? Okay, so it's been a pretty good year for us. It's been very busy, uh, very challenging though, as we continue to come out of the the shutdown from COVID. Everything is pretty much rockin' and rollin', uh, right here, right now. Things are pretty open. Uh, things are moving more, uh, closer to normal. Uh, our largest challenge, and I think this is true for everyone, is, uh, finding staff. Um, it's real hard to find lawyers right now. I'm down a few positions and have been for a while. So most of us kind of rotate in and out doing, uh, you know, two to three jobs, um, two to three caseloads really, uh, for a while now. So hopefully we'll find some people soon. The, um, but it has been, we have gotten a lot more done. As we came out of the, the shutdown, it looks like we closed this last calendar year. Uh, twenty-eight percent more cases than we did the prior year, um, when we weren't fully open. So, uh, things are starting to, to move again, and that, that's good. Um, makes it even harder, of course, when we have, uh, not fully staffed. Uh, revocation hearings have gone up seventy percent this year. I think during the shutdown, a lot of those just really didn't happen. They didn't bring them. So they're, they're moving again. Part of the problem, uh, salaries have changed a lot, uh, in my industry at least, and I think really everywhere. I think the largest driver for public defenders that really shot salary expectations up. Uh, apparently Fulton County now starts new lawyers right out of law school at a hundred thousand dollars a year.
How much?
A hundred thousand dollars a year for new public defenders.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm not in direct competition with Fulton County, um, and, but it still affects, uh, you know, people can go to Fulton County and make a lot more. The immediate surrounding area pays more to keep up with Fulton. And so it kind of trickles down here. Um, so that, that has greatly affected things. And then, you know, just so much demand for lawyers everywhere. It's been one of our large issues. Uh, the training programs, I think I talk to y'all about training all the time. Everyone has to operate so independently that it's important uh, to have good training so they know what their role is and actually perform the job, uh, with minimal supervision after they get going. Uh, the, the primary training program we'd used, it's, uh, too expensive now. I think it's something like twenty thousand dollars. He did a lot of fundraising prior to COVID, during COVID, fundraising didn't happen, and so now there's no, uh, you have to pay the entire cost of it, and that's, that's too much. So we're starting to look at the other training programs that we had at times used in the past too. There's some other organizations that are, uh, hopefully not as cost prohibitive. One of them used to be in Macon, so that was great. It was very low travel expenses. It's, it's still around, but it's in New Hampshire, so we'll look at how, how much that costs. Trying to think. With respect to the budget, the, the increase, there's about a two percent increase of for the existing funding just to cover the additional cost of, um, benefits that goes up, that went up this year. Uh, the rest of the money is for salary increases for the lawyers I do have. I'm trying to make sure I don't lose anybody to, uh, Chatham County or, or any of the other circuits, frankly. So I want to try and make sure the people I have, that I'm competitive and, and they're not gonna start looking elsewhere. That's the main reason.
Can you compare with Chatham County when it comes to pay?
Um, I, I think I'm competitive, uh, and true. I think, I try to do better than them historically, not a whole lot better, but, uh, yeah.
Retention.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I try to do better. Cause a lot of people, they want to live in Savannah. That's kind of a destination city. So I try and have, you know, some benefit here.
And live there and work here.
Exactly, and cover the gas expenses for that. Yes, sir. Um, there was some discussion of the Pledge of Allegiance, this will just take a second. We actually have a, a senior judge that's doing a Department of Corrections cases in Tatnel County for, so these cases that arise out of the prison. At any rate, she starts with a calendar with the Pledge of Allegiance, and beforehand she makes an announcement, there is no pause after, um, one nation, no, no, under God. So, so I have to let Representative Williams know that.
It's just opposite, huh?
Hey, hey, tell them.
Has it? She says there's no pause, though. She wants to write, yeah, one nation under God.
Oh, okay, sorry, she's in line.
There are other people pushing, yeah, pushing on that and.
Commissioner Gillis, tell them, man, we've been trying to get that for the last eleven years, right?
I guess we just have to start saying it every time.
That's right. I don't know if there's any additional. I could keep talking if you want me to.
No, then we received your, we received your, um, requests prior, prior to your arrival, and we know uh, you, you were coming to visit us because of the.
We have to have the contract back to the state, uh, before July first. Actually, you know, we do this every year, but, you know, before we actually adopt our budget. But his request actually is a, a new total to the overall of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand fifty-one dollars. That's circuit wide. So our increase to the budget, uh, is thirty-two percent of that roughly, it's about sixty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, and we do need to move on that tonight, so we can go ahead and send it back to the state as well as have the other counties, you know, approve that too.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the budget for the circuit-wide housing program.
Second?
Second.
About four seconds. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, thank you, sir.
Brandon.
It was worth the wait.
Hey, Brandon. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's me calling you. I just want to see if your phone still works.
Oh, absolutely, I feel it.
You feel it? Okay, alright, okay, alright.
Got him on speed down?
No, I, I, um, I used to call Brandon. I would go up there and, um, talk with him. But I hadn't seen or heard from him, so I thought maybe you had changed your number. I was calling you soft.
Oh, no, absolutely not. I've had the same cell phone as twenty years now, so hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll last.
Well, I, I sent you a text message, so.
Thank you, Brandon. I think one of the best things, uh, about your, um, office, if I may say, is that I haven't heard any complaints, so that's a, that's a, that's always a good thing.
Thank you. We do, the people I have are great and they do work hard.
Yeah.
We're getting a lot done.
I told him face to face when I went.
Yeah, definitely appreciate everything you all do. I mean, I, I know you all, I mean, you could just look at the numbers of the caseload and, uh, how many you have on staff. We greatly appreciate everything. And I, I know you all are moving as fast as you can to expedite a lot of the cases, but, man, we, we definitely appreciate it, cause without you all, where would we be? So, thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you.
Alright. Contract Coastal Health District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, actually a follow-on from, from last time we discussed that. Um, this is to, for the Liberty County Board of Health, uh, to administer the opioid dispersment funds that came through the lawsuit that was distributed uh, through the state of Georgia. And so, um, like, we received eighty-three thousand dollars here for specified purposes under that lawsuit, uh, that was distributed to the counties. The good news, I think I mentioned this before, is that the Board of Health already has an opioid unit that addresses that in the circuit. So this would go to specifically Liberty County projects to do that. And so this is an agreement with them to administer those funds and give us a report back.
That's my only concern, that we get a report back, so I'm good.
It's, it's required as part of the agreement, yes, sir.
There's no way it must do everything. It's good to be able to partner with someone who can provide a service and, uh, then give us a report back on the success of their program, so. You need a, uh.
Motion, a second, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we contract with the Board of Health, the opioid program, Coastal Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second, we partner with the Board of Health. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, they are partners. Get to him. Option to purchase the real property, George Forestry.
Yes, sir. As you know, we were approached by Georgia Forestry, uh, Commission about, uh, obtaining land from us to build a new forestry unit, consolidate the Long County, Liberty County units into this one new unit, which would be located on, out by the old airport, on, on part of that property. Uh, as you're aware, it's about a five acre tract that they would build and develop on. They've already, uh, approved bonds for that project and are ready to go. Subject to your approval, the final option to sell that property to them, we can direct sell to them since they're a governmental agency. Uh, and the price for sale to them, uh, for that construction is fifty thousand dollars. So we need a motion if it's, if it's okay for, to, um, to sell that property under their option of purchase.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, we approve that sale of that property, fifty thousand dollars, George Forestry, any further discussion? I guess for the public's awareness of that, you, you remind me, government to government, we can without.
Correct.
Yeah, but, uh, otherwise we have to put it on the open market.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Alright. All in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, Board of Department.
Yes, sir.
Committee, are you ready?
Watch us work.
Oh, man. Alright, uh.
Mr. Chair, uh.
Oh, you denouncing, alright.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to the Board of, uh, Aging Services Advisory Council, uh, we make a recommendation of Ms. Andrea Valdez.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Now, let's see, he, he said a recommendation, he didn't say motion, so.
Oh.
Oh, I thought he did say that.
I make a motion, okay?
Any further discussion?
Chair is on.
All in favor of Ms. Andrea Valdez, representing us on the Aging Services Advisory Council, they've been on my show of hands, please. Commissioner Gillis, you good?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, it's not here, but it was in the, our folder for the, um, CRC. The, uh, make a recommendation that we reappoint Richard Hayes.
Okay, we'll take that as a motion?
Second.
Everything is on motion, I'm sorry, yeah.
Richard Hayes be reappointed. Uh, I serve with him, he's doing a fine job for us.
Okay.
All in favor? Mr. Hayes is reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder too, and I know that the committee's aware of this. That's a, that's a, that'll be a recommendation to the other governmental agencies.
That's right, they have to.
They have to acquiesce on that, so they'll, you know, we'll send them that, the commissioner's desires there, and then they'll, we'll give them so much time to respond.
I remember that now.
Okay, right, you're right, okay.
Was it the CRC?
Yeah, so he said it wasn't, it's not listed here, but it's, it was up for reappointment. Gotta write that one in.
Yeah, see, what happened, we were smart enough to realize it, you know, we had.
I wouldn't confuse what y'all did as being smart, but, uh.
Trying to keep them, trying to keep them honest?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, next one, please.
Okay, uh, Cultural and Historical Resource Committee. It was six position, we had five applicants. One being Len Pace replaced, Jeffrey Porter to be reappointed, La Sierra Lovett to be reappointed, Jason Baker to be reappointed, and Carolyn Carter to be reappointed. That's in the form of a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is it second?
Second.
Alright, so there are five positions, so Mr. Brown, we have one position, so we'll advertise.
We can re-advertise forward or the commission could consider somebody else.
Okay.
Whatever your wish is.
I believe we can find somebody.
Find someone, y'all wanna work on that?
Another five hundred dollars.
Alright, well, I'll tell you what, try to bring something back to us by the mid-month.
Right, we will.
Is that too soon, or?
That's good.
Okay, alright. All in favor of the motion presented, let it know and show the hands, please. Alright, those persons are reappointed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, on the DFACS board, Miss, put, kept me out, just, Putuya.
Put, Putuya.
Putuya Gomilla, Chameleon wants to be reappointed, a motion.
Second.
Alright, a motion to reappoint Ms. Chameleon to the DFACS board. Any further discussion?
That's, um, another one that's not listed.
What, DFACS? It's, it's on here?
Should be on here.
Is it?
Yeah.
DFCS, yeah, mm-hmm. DFCS board.
It's not on the agenda.
I got, I got Board of Recreation, Aging, Coastal Workforce, Coastal Historical, Behavioral Health, is that, is that it?
Yeah, that's not it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the announcement at one hour, I'm, I'm not looking.
It's not an announcement, it's just not on the, uh, on, on the agenda, so.
They're, they're still confused down there.
No, we're not.
We're going by this, Commissioner Gillis. Commissioner Waller, don't you say that?
Y'all like going by the agenda.
So, so do, do.
We're going by this one.
So do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda, put that on file? It's not that serious, is it? That's what I was thinking.
DFACS is the only other one.
Alright, we're, we had a motion in a second, right?
We did.
All in favor, show of hands, Mr. Chameleon.
Commissioner Gillis trying to.
He's right, though.
Yeah, he's right.
I'll just, I saw it in the packet.
Alright, uh, Georgia Department of, uh, Behavioral Health, uh, we had no one.
That's always a difficult one to.
Georgia Forester Board. Uh, Mr. Chuck Smith would like to be reappointed.
Second.
A motion, a second, that we reappoint Mr. Chuck Smith, any further discussion on that? All in favor, show of hands, please. Mr. Smith is reappointed, congratulations to him.
Okay, Library Board.
Tough one here. Oh, it used to be.
And Miss Mary Beth.
Dieters.
Diers.
Second.
Motion close to that? Motion second, Ms. Mary Beth.
Spell it, please.
D E I, T E R S. Dieters.
Diers.
What'd you say?
Alright. Ers.
Yes, that name?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor, show of hands, please. Ms. Mary Beth.
Chair of Public Facility Authority. Uh, Mr. Renee Camper wants to be reappointed in the form of a motion.
He's served on there several years. Is it second to that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Renee Camper will serve, be reappointed to the Public Facility Authority, handle the financing. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Uh, is Camper reappointed?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the last one we had was a Board of Recreation. I confirmed it with the Commissioner from that district. Commissioner Jones, to reappoint Ms. Charlene Godley.
Serving a long time. Motion second, we reappoint Ms. Charlene Godley to the Board of Recreation, any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Alright.
Charlene's still the, the chairperson.
She's still the chairperson. Alright, does that complete your?
That completes it.
Alright. Other than the two not being listed on the.
Yeah, well, you, you know, this.
I mean, hey, we at least get an A minus, man, come on.
The Behavior Health, and I, I think Commissioner Stevens said the Georgia Behavior Health, so that's.
He had to bring out the red pen.
Mr. Brown.
He had to bring up the.
Historically, that Behavior Health and Development Dispositible has been hard to.
Been very tough.
I don't even recall how we wound up feeling it before, but I remember it being problematic.
It was. I really think that, that y'all ended up the last with ask if they would do it and.
So I'm interested to look at the, look at the meeting requirements and perhaps canvass the community, canvass, see if there's a name you might recommend for that one too.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Talking about, where are we with the Water Resource Council? Talking about, where are we with the Water Resource Council? And one more other one. I know Commissioner Waldo was on the Recreation Board as our liaison.
Right.
I, I, I mean, are you still there officially? If he's not, then that's something that we need to look at to try to
I was actually on the, the liaison there, and I was also on the nine-one-one board.
Have you given up both of those? Or you have?
I don't recall a
I remember the, the rec board.
Yeah, me too, but not the nine-one-one.
Chairman Macabre appointed me to the
Was that something, uh?
And I'd been on it for, in fact, it was myself and Mr. Stevens, I believe, on it.
On nine-one-one?
Right, yes.
So you still on the nine-one-one board?
Still on it.
So do we have a vacancy?
Actually, what happens is you only have really one commissioner appointment on there.
Okay.
And the other appointment that Commissioner Stevens has been serving in, I believe,
He was for the fire
Represented for the fire service that was on there.
Okay. So we have a vacancy for the nine-one-one?
So you really, really, if, I think, if Commissioner Waldo's not gonna be there, Commissioner Stevens ought to fill the role for the county commissioners. And then you ought to probably consider, if necessary, you know, that board was created when, before you had a county wide fire service. Basically. But we could, we could, you know, you're very limited now on who you could put back on there for other fire services simply because of resistance, but you could find somebody else to put on there, I think, in that place. Sorry for all that. Sorry for that rambling, but
The rec board, if, uh, Commissioner Frazier
Frazier, you like
Do, do we need to put that on the agenda for next month, or can we just go ahead and appoint him?
You can make a decision right now if you wanted to.
I would accept.
Okay. I'll make that in form of a motion, or that we appoint Commissioner Frazier to the Recreation Board.
And what about the Water Council?
Well, the Water Council, Water Council is, uh, it wasn't created by any board, but it already has designated members that serve. The chief elected officials of each jurisdiction that have water resources serve on there. And then you have a technical committee that's made up of the engineers for the entities and the administrators. So you don't really make appointments to that board.
That, that's the board. That, uh, yeah.
All right, let's go back. So
I made a motion. I thought I heard a second.
I did, I did.
One second that we have Commissioner Frager. You willing to serve, so?
Absolutely.
All right, yeah. Any further discussion? Anybody wanna check for that position? Uh, all in favor? Show of hands.
Yeah, you can vote for yourself.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. Brown, announcements?
No, sir. I don't really have any, other than we continue to work on the budget.
I mean, if, um, I think I sent out an email about the, the Walk-A-Thon, um, on the thirteenth. So if y'all wanna come out and join us, we'd appreciate it. And if y'all don't want these pens that, that I gave y'all, man, they, they write
They're brilliant. They're writing pens. If you leave it around, I might get you.
If you don't want yours, give it to me. If you don't want yours, give it to me.
I, I know where I can't leave it.
I'm, I'm selling.
Right. I, I definitely can't leave it up here.
This thing right. This thing, it just flows, man.
That's right.
We need to back up. We were, I think, in the, in the haste we were trying to move, we, we missed the minutes approval.
In the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
In the beginning, I think we probably
Give it out, Trojus.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I, I make a motion that, that we approve, uh, last month, April meetings.
Second. Motion second approve the last month, the meetings for the month, the minutes for the meetings in April. Any further discussion? All in favor? Show of hands, please. All right, good catch, Mr. Mo.
I ticked it off.
Didn't do it.
We good.
Uh, once again, let me commend the commission for the job it does. Um, certainly, uh, every time we get to, uh, attend A C C G and to speak to other commissioners from all over the state of Georgia, we get to hear what's going on in and around us. And, uh, number one, you need to know that several of those commissioners have their eyes on Liberty County. Additionally, uh, when you talk to your, I think Commissioner Jones will say, amen, you neighbors, you find out you ain't doing so bad after all. Liberty County's doing really well, in addition to what Commissioner, Representative Al Williams said, the county's doing well. We just need to keep the progress going, so, keep the progress going. So just wanted to say that, having had that experience with the commissioners from around the state, sit and chat with them, what's going on in your county? What's going on in your county? Those kind of things. And we took some good notes. Um, we do, do need probably do a little bit of, uh, interest business on the citizen journalists.
We will.
Right, yes.
I would like for us to
It's in the works? Yeah, okay.
Chairman, if we could, we, we could, um, send a thank you to, um, Mr. Williams for the pens, but we'd really like checks, regardless of the pens.
You know, we, we are, it's a work in progress, 'cause he, he's gonna be able to attend the county workshops now. But we talked about having, uh, sitting out with him prior to him going to Atlanta, so he would have our wish list. Uh, I, I am comfortable that we have, um, made some valuable contacts with the funding sources. But as, we do need him to be in on our requests so that if someone should question him, he'll be able to, uh, uh, support those requests and, and be educated on what, what we're doing. Uh, just to know that it's not just the county, but I know the city of Riceboro has been meeting and had some requests. Several people have had applications for financial assistance, so it's not just the Liberty County Board of Commissions. But he, uh, as probably, but a car or two does need to be, um, kept in the loop when it comes to, uh, funding requests. So no one's caught off guard when, when they hear it out there.
Mr. Chair. Let me say this. I remember years ago, we would always, just before time for them to go into session, we would always, the commissioners and some other mayors from other cities, we would meet up with, like, Representatives Wayne, Ron Stevens and those, and discuss some of our needs before they go. And also, we used to have what we called, it wasn't, say, a Day of Liberty County at the Capitol, but it was a time that we could go up and discuss it with them up there. So we might need to get back in that footstep or do
I can tell you, out of sight, out of mind.
What someone said, I don't know if it's Mr. Brown who said that, of course, I know Chatham County does a Chatham County day, but when you have them here at, at your place, you have the undivided attention. Some folk think that's much more effective.
We certainly examined, we did use to do that, and in the comments we got back were that if you're gonna meet with us in a group, y'all please consolidate your thoughts so that
Yeah, don't come.
So that they come as one voice.
Yeah.
So we can work on that.
Yeah, we'll work on it. All right. Did, did y'all know that the Lakers playing tonight? It's starting? Chair, take motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second, all in favor?